Okay, well, I will start with roofs since, I don't know why, just got this right. So I've passed this stuff along. I've color quoted it because they say I speak in color to get easier. So we did a walk-through on a couple of nice days, believe it or not. There were a few that we were able to get up on the roof and do kind of a overall roof replacement, roof fix, kind of assessment of your existing facilities. So we'll start with the Gilbert campus, just because it's maybe a little easier to talk about.
I have a question for you guys there. So we had talked about the possibility of not re-roofing and just fixing Gilbert?
Yes, so let's talk about that.
Is that possible?
Yes, it is. So memo that was sent out shows three items that popped up on the Gilbert campus. So the main dark blue box, that's item number one, and then those numbers correlate back to the budget sheet. So item number one was the re-roof at the media center. So that existing roof is, my understanding is it's got some spots that are leaking on it. So if you're on the sheet, this is the Gilbert sheet. And it could use a full roof replacement. It's to the point that it probably could happen. That being said, it also has the possibility to do some patching. So if we did a full roof replacement, that's about a $15 square foot line item. If we looked at peeling back the ballasts and doing kind of a re-seaming, we're looking probably about a $9 square foot. There are a couple of areas that the insulation seemed a little spongy underneath, so we may have to pull that up and see when that happens. But we think that that $9 square foot will kind of cover that. So that's more of a short-term concept, which I think makes some sense until you make final decisions on your facilities. But that could be taken care of there. And then number three is the light blue box in the middle. That's the skylight that sits over the existing media center. Part of the water infiltration is because the roof is currently pulling away from the curb. So when we went to re-seam and seal that rubber, we could pull that out, kind of just repatch it, put it back together. But the skylight's kind of seen its time as well. It's starting to delaminate a little bit, and there might be some water infiltration that's coming through there. So I don't know if that's something, again, that you would want to do right away. But we did note that that probably needs to be replaced at some point in time. So a full replacement of the skylight is looking at that $25,000 mark. I mean, your other option is to get rid of the skylight and fill it in with roofing, but the price is about the same. So, you know, our recommendation would be to just replace it with a skylight of a similar size. And then item number two is the little green box. That's just one area, again, that that roof needs to be replaced. It's a pretty small piece of the puzzle, but it looks like it's sort of its time as well.
Yeah, that one's pretty bad. It was, maybe, three years ago, we re-roofed this one section here. It was assumed that that was going to be a good one.
Is that the canopy? Or, oh, that's a sort of a walkway?
Yeah.
So other than that, the roofs in Gilbert looked to be in pretty good shape. So those were the couple of areas that we put together. And again, this is kind of a comprehensive list. This isn't necessarily the items that we think you need to do. But we wanted to give you an overall concept so you could prioritize what parts and pieces needed to happen.
What would be the type of guarantee for this roofing?
Well, usually a rubber roof, so we do like a fully adhered EPDM system, and they have like a 25-year warranty that is associated with them. There's different levels, but 25 is kind of the minimum that we would recommend. Again, as you're making decisions on your facility, you could go down to a 15-year. If that would be something we could do, you could save a little money there if we didn't think we needed more than 15 years on a roof as well.
That's for a complete replacement though, not just for the re- not for re-seaming everything?
Yes, correct.
So just so you know, that 25 years, that's clearing off all raining?
And on the re-seaming, is it $9 per square foot on the repaired area? Or is it $9 square foot regardless?
Overall, we just do kind of an overall square footage, so it averages out about $9. Some areas are, you know, like the area that you're curving up to the skylight.
So if you had just one little area, you know, I mean, not only area, how much area it would be. So if you did, you know, $9 a square foot on, say you did one day's worth of work, you know what I'm saying? So you'd be charged a full square footage amount even though you did just a tiny, some only small repairs?
Yeah, it's kind of beyond small repairs. I mean, it needs to be kind of a full, yeah, re-seaming. So it's pulling it off, re-seaming, and putting the ballasts and stuff back on. So you'll see in Evolith that we do have a couple of areas that we think like a corner is bad, and we would just do that area. But this roof is beyond kind of part and piecing. It would be a full re-seam and reseal.
And then what kind of guarantee on that?
I don't know what type of guarantee they'll put together for re-seaming and sealing.
Who's doing the work?
There's nobody doing the work because we haven't decided to go forward. So that would be something we could discuss if that was the direction you guys wanted to go. Then we can move on to the Evolith plan. So again, I tried to color quote this so it'd be a little easier to read the numbers. But number four is Franklin, so that's the yellow box on the left-hand side of the page. There's a couple of things on the Franklin roof. There is the cornice on the exterior edge that needs to be re-roofed. We've got some re-sealing and re-seaming that needs to happen. So you can see again that that's the 25,000 square feet. Then that's at $3 a square foot because there's not quite as much of it, you know? So we dropped that to a $3 a square foot price instead of the nine. And then we've got to fix the perimeter edge. So currently on the Franklin, there's a little drop-down in what is it, two feet or two and a half feet that runs the entire perimeter, and that's a rubber roof as well. And currently, water sits there and leaks back into the building. So that needs to get seamed and sealed so you're not getting that water infiltration. It's kind of a funny detail. We never do a roof, you know, that right now, but that's the way it was built back then. So that's that piece for the Franklin. Number five is the connecting link perimeter. So number five is blue. The number 17 and number five, that's the light blue color. Those are the two links. Again, those are currently a ballasted roof. So we would look at probably replacing that completely or the ballast off. That's the only two roofs that you have left that are ballasted. So that's that piece. Number six is, which color is six?
It's flashing. It seemed to be flashing around the...
Oh, yeah. Yep. And that's a complete roof replacement for that little piece. Or the counter flashing at the link. Yep. So that would be just that little piece over the gym. And then number seven and eight are the rework of the roof's edge. So that's the red line. So back onto the high school piece. There's a couple of different components, but around those perimeter edges, some of the rubber isn't up high enough on the brick, so the brick is deteriorating. Some of it needs some additional tuck pointing. Some of it has the metal edge that was just nailed on, so there's water coming through there. So just kind of in a general sense, the edge of those details need to be reworked. So that's why they're highlighted in red. Fifteen and sixteen is the blue box that's in the middle of the high school, and that is the auditorium and penthouse. Currently, the brick has deteriorated pretty significantly up there. So we actually are maybe recommending just covering that with a metal panel instead of trying to tuck point that brick. It's kind of beyond its lifetime. And then that also needs a complete re-roof there as well. So that metal panel would seal that exposed brick and give you a little bit longer product. Number 10 is down in the corner of the high school. That's the purple box. That's what I was talking about before. There's some wet insulation underneath there, so that got a pretty bit of a spongy corner. So we're recommending just pulling out that corner, not replacing that whole roof, but just in the area that looks like there's some water infiltration and doing some work there. That's why that's pink down in the corner of that piece. And then number 12, it's a white roof, so that's a newer roof. That's the green box back over in the middle. That just needs some re-seaming and sealing. And then the dark blue, number 14, is re-seaming that roof perimeter again. So not a full roof replacement, just more of the perimeter work. A lot of those areas, again, the rubber's just pulling away. A lot of it is because you've got the brick, so the rubber was never built up. The water gets behind the brick, and then it starts coming in, and that rubber just starts coming away. So that's a lot of the highlights that we can see when we took a walk-through. So overall, if we did it all, you can see both Gilbert and Evolith were, you know, right around the $400,000 mark. I did put a $45,000 line item for contingency, so that's about a 10% contingency and some money in there for some permitting. So your total estimated cost is that $443,755 if you did everything.
What was that fund, Jeff? What was that fund? $475. Now, all of this was qualified for that, right?
Sure, you've been approved of. I reckon that we need to go through this because it needs to happen. It'd be nice to repair all of them. Money that needs to be spent by the end of this year if there wasn't a...
What else are we going to spend that money on? Narrow requirements, right?
Can't hurt to go with the bid at least.
Yeah, I got the bids.
Yeah, if you want to hit the street, I mean, if you're going to go, now is the time to go. You know, in another month, you're going to miss your window. You know, contractors are already getting things lined up. So if this wants to happen, your window is now.
Do you have to be able to hold on?
For us to put a set of joints together?
Right, for start to finish to do the job.
I don't. I don't even want to guess at this time.
You've done on bids and booked up people on the time we finally move forward on the bid?
Yeah.
Any comments on that?
We'll look forward to that.
Oh, and if we did, excuse me, are we going to take the Gilbert one? Are you recommending that we should replace or re-roof? So we did it both ways?
We could do it as an alternate to do just the patching, just to see where those numbers come in at.
And then maybe like Tom and Bill were asking, what the warranty difference would be for one versus the other?
Yep, sure.
But the bid that we have is for the re-roof. That's written into this as far as the total.
Not the bid. With the full rate.
Right, I mean, I think if you're going to get some sort of guarantee on the yellow campus or Gilbert campus, I would definitely go with a re-roof so you can get at least the full benefit of the warranty versus patching it.
Okay. All right. Check that off the list. Okay, so Jeff had asked us to take a look and, you know, thinking big picture for the future of your Evolith-Gilbert campuses. And one of the questions that has sat on the table for a while is, could we build new? And of course, the answer is yes, but then the next question is, well, where would it go? So we've done a little bit of research, not a ton. You know, these are very, very schematic. These are just meant to be a conversation piece. And we have found two, two concepts. Okay, so, oh, please. So what if, what if we wanted to build new? Where could it possibly go? So the first site option, option A, would be the Evolith concept. So we contacted the city. I had a conversation with Jackie Junick. To start things off, to do a new building, you're looking at 50-acre lot, probably, pretty much as a minimum, which would allow for new schools, some parking, fields, and these would work together. So that was kind of our first criteria. Is there anything available? We looked at the west side of Evolith. We looked out and failed township, and we just really opened up the board. And the spot that kind of we kept going back to after I talked to the city of Evolith is we realized that the VEDA property that's sitting behind the college will be returned back to the city of Evolith, VEDA's disney hold apparently. So they're returning that land back. And so there's actually a 60-acre lot that kept inserted to be developed when VEDA was doing the progress park piece. So you can see that there's already kind of a little pathway that runs through that piece of property. And Jackie thought that the city of Evolith would be open at least for a conversation to see if that would be available. So we drew a yellow box on what 60 acres looks like and popped in a brown box on the top showing what a 200-plus square foot school could look like and how, you know, fields could be associated with that land. Now, that being said, there's going to be challenges with both of these sites. You know, this land, as we all know, is very rocky. I mean, there would definitely be some blasting that would need to happen in order for us to get foundations. We'd have to be able to get utilities in there. So by no means is this just an easy site to build on. But that being said, it's 16-acre site. It's located in Evolith, and it certainly could be a possibility. The second site that we found is on the Gilbert location. So this is kind of a triangle piece that sits right behind, there's the little city campground. I think it's a city campground. And there's the beach access down to the pit. So all of that land prior to that is about an 80-acre lot. This land is a little more of a buildable site from an initial onset. It's flat. It's not as rocky. It probably would be a little easier to build on. Currently, there's the ATV trail that runs through it. Again, I did contact the city of Gilbert, and she was very open to a conversation about that to utilize for a public entity. And so again, we took the same square footage, took the same parts and pieces, and started putting it on a site plan just to see, you know, how that could potentially fit. And that's kind of the extent of those two pieces. But kind of the big picture is, after we looked, these were the two that have kind of boiled down as at least conversation pieces.
There are some different options in Progress Park too, if you wouldn't necessarily be just...
Correct.
We figured, I mean, this for Ball Park, we're talking a minimum of 50 acres.
If you want to do all your amenities on one site, 50 acres is what kind of the minimum recommendation is.
And both of these are owned by the municipalities?
Well, they're currently, yeah, owned by the cities. Yep.
At least it's on a private or commercial side?
That's correct. It's not the state land. You know, we just thought, again, as a starting point, let's just see what the cities have. And I did, again, contact both cities. And so, you know, I just said, this is just a conversation point. We're just starting to look if this was something Evolith-Gilbert Board was interested in. You know, obviously, we'd have to go through the next step of sitting with the councils and having a conversation on whether this is, you know, a viable option for them as well. But we thought we'd got to start with something, so here we are.
Any of the other sites Jeff, you mentioned that Progress Park has some other options. That whole area though, is it, I'm assuming it's all the same as far as rocky and terrain and everything?
Some of those are better than others, I guess.
Yeah.
Will be run into regardless, might we?
In that area of the city, yes. And then as you kind of move further south, on the Highway 53, 37, crossing, there is another little spot available there. There's still a lot of wetlands in there too. And that's city-owned, and the city was not really excited about putting a public entity on that intersection, thinking that that might be a better use for commercials and things. So this is kind of where they thought you get the best thing for your buck.
There's not, there's not a whole lot of options working on... Maybe, yes, I was supposed to...
They do.
And they don't like photography, Bob, here.
They, we have, yeah, we've run into them multiple of the times, and there's never been any movement from that group. Not that we couldn't explore that again, but, you know, of course, there is private property too that... But we just don't want to open that kind of worms till...
It's off the road.
Yeah.
I like the Gilbert location.
Yeah, I think there's some advantages to the...
No, what? So the lake being right there, right, for children's fishing or something?
Yeah, we part of the, you know, PE class for our birthdays, basically.
Is this mock-up, just a mock-up for mock-up purposes? Like, I see this is, this one in Evolith is close to the college, and could the school...
Yeah, it could.
In theory, be able to move to the college for collaboratively?
It truly could, yep. What this does show... They do, yep.
Oh, so it could be even...
Yep, it could. If this, if this was the route we wanted to explore a little bit more, you can see where kind of the dark green is and then the lighter green or the white. You potentially would have maybe a couple tiered heights, right? You know, maybe the school would be up, and then the fields would be down or vice versa. So that would not probably end up being a real flat piece of property. I think you would have to build and, you know, deal with the grade because it's pretty steep in some areas back there. So I think if we had the opportunity to explore that, you know, we would kind of put the school on the flattest piece and then deal with other parts and pieces rather than just saying we want behind the college, you know? So, but yes, they own quite a bit of property back there.
Because part of our conversation was always collab. Talking about collaborating with the college, I mean, that would be convenient if we were that close. You know, where kids don't have to drive, they could just walk across a skyway or something to the college for class. And we'd say, well, that time, but...
Well, the potential to access other possible funding too.
Well, that was part of the conversation for the financing of it, right? Because it was twofold, right? The red tape on hand, financing.
Okay. Okay, so move to thoughts at least. And then the last piece, and I don't really have a handle because I don't really have a lot of... I don't know exactly the direction that you wanted to go. But we did talk about one time about, you know, renovation on existing facilities. Kind of the last part of our presentation back in September, whenever that was. You know, we had looked at what happened if you brought everybody, you know, to the Evolith campus. How would that work? We had to find at that point in time, but you just probably would have to add on to the campus in order for that to happen because you still didn't have room for your tech ed and your fax program needed some space over here. So, I mean, I do have that set of plans. I don't know if there's been any more conversation on that or if there's other numbers that we need to pull together, you know, if that was an option you guys wanted to still take a look at. So that's more of a kind of a conversation piece for me to pull together.
I think what they're looking for is people on renovation costs and changes to the system.
Yeah, so we have... We have a deferred maintenance. I didn't print it. So we have the deferred maintenance when we looked at the Evolith campus. Okay, so the, when we looked at the cost for the renovations, we had the minimal one campus plan, which was incorporating the Gilbert students on the Evolith campus. Remodel the Evolith campus to a minimum, and at that industrial wing, we were at about a $3 million line item there. That was just to do the minimal renovation to get the kids here. That did not include the deferred maintenance projects for this campus or for the Evolith campus. And when we had gone through that list, that was a $20 million item if you did everything. So that was kind of the numbers we had pressed or we had put out last year. The top deferred maintenance items that we had talked about was the exterior envelope. Roof was one of them, so we've already moved forward on that. That was a big number. $400,000 of that would be roofs. Tuck pointing and windows were the other two big numbers there for your deferred maintenance on the exterior piece. You would do a mechanical electrical system upgrade. We talked about doing the parking and bus drop-off. That would include the pool, gym, and locker room renovations. Security upgrades, which would be the doors, your playgrounds, your entrances. That would take care of your interior finishes. And we talked about the athletic fields and bus garage at that time. So that's what that $20 million kind of covered those parts and pieces as well.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, that $3 million renovation number with the $20 million... That was, that was to configure it to be an old, like strictly a three-sections school?
Yes.
Very, very cheap loading?
That would give you pretty much, you've maxed out the square footage here. That didn't give you any future growth. That just got the kids to your Evolith campus.
And that means that some classes, we have four classes in the grade. We would be overloading some classes, some class sizes to fit all those kids.
Correct. And so, you know, if you look at putting some sort of an addition on here in order to incorporate those kids, you know, we would have to look at, you know, if you did a four-sections school, you know, we'd have to look at that one point in time, like cafeteria, kitchen commons area, that would open up space in your existing facilities for classrooms then. So, you know, we would have to kind of look at what that piece, what that addition would want to be to compose all those kids. So when we do kind of a cost estimate, you know, if we walked through the facility and said, okay, every, you know, classroom is going to get new lights, new ceilings, new casework, new flooring. It's easy for us to put a square foot number to that, you know, $75 a square foot to do interior remodel. That's no structural, you know, it's no ME. It's just basically an easy interior finish. But if you're looking at investing in this facility, I think we need to kind of keep those deferred maintenance items on the list. And those are your big numbers. That's why they're still sitting out there. It's not easy. And we did look at that time, back in September as well, on, you know, kind of reversing it and, you know, could you host all the kids on the Gilbert campus? And there just wasn't as much square footage over there to reverse the scenario. So that's why Evolith was the chosen campus to take a peek and talk.
One of my biggest concerns, I guess, when we were looking at any of those scenarios is the athletic facilities. And it still doesn't really work to what the issues are that we have under the ball field and the track and everything else with that. And I do, I do have a, and I said it before, but I just want to say it again. You know, I do, I mean, ideally, if we're going to spend this much money to do anything, I want to make sure that we have all the needs taken into consideration for our kids. And athletics is a big need, I think, to take into consideration for our kids.
Yeah.
So that is one of my biggest things when Jeff reviewed that in our last work session above the building. That is probably one of my most glaring things is that it kept, it never really... None of the options, other than the rebuilding, addressed. other than the rebuilding addressed that.
Correct, and that was, yeah, we were just trying to prioritize those education.
Yeah, no, and I understand that part.
Yep, absolutely. Um, the Gilbert camp, or the Evolith campus, you know, you do have the two facilities that are sitting. Um, you know, we looked at the big picture. If the, the two buildings came down, that would free up some green space here as well. Um, but it's still, well, sixty acres, right? I mean, that's what they recommend for on the site, so it kind of gives you a sense on your campus.
Beginning of every kind of, they looked at both campuses are irregularly shaped.
Right.
So they're not, like, I think what, a third of Gilbert's land is a hill.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's, it's in the woods still. I mean, so it's not really developable. Um, it might be some acreage there, but it's just, it's inside a rocky land, you know, so.
Yeah.
And that's, I've got the same thing, but like an L-shaped here.
Yeah.
Different level.
And the beauty with two campuses is you could split your athletics. I mean, if you had your education facility in Evolith, could you do athletic facilities in Gilbert? I mean, could you develop that site to start meeting those needs? And it's not uncommon to have to travel to get to some of these athletic facilities too. And you've got a site over there that could be used, you know.
And that honestly is some conversation that I was interested in hearing more about is that potential to be able to possibly do something like that.
I mean, ideally, again, we all want to be on one campus. If you're going to build, then relax, but you would build that, you know, we have to kind of fire our tires. If you're in an existing space, you know, how do we be creative with the space that we have?
Yeah, I mean, realistically, even if we decided to stay on this campus or if we built a new, in any of the progress park or any fields, you're not going to commit something else.
No.
Whereas they are more so like, no, it's.
I think, I mean, may, maybe I don't really understand exactly how the different programs work, but I mean, even if you have a school and say the athletic facility in a different location. I mean, regardless where the locations are, it's, I mean, don't we live in a time where we, we want to like serve dual purpose for everything we have? Like, we, we're going to need green space for our, um, school, you know, five programs. And that, that's kind of the redundancies of, you know, having green space at the school site and then having an athletics facility. You, you only use it for games or practices versus, you know, curriculum also where, you know, if they were on the same location, I mean.
It would be ideal for them to be the same.
Yeah.
You know, you're using, you know, you're not having, you're not creating redundancies again like we kind of are right now. I mean, we have a football field in Gilbert that barely hits mode anymore, it's just not used.
And I completely agree with that, Mike. I'm just saying ideally if a brand new camp, you know what I mean, like waking like top level, if a brand new campus, let's say at this Gilbert new location, would not be able to exist. Looking at any of the other options for the remodel, I don't want to forget about the athletic piece for what we have and I don't want to just make it work. I think that's not right to do to our kids, you know, athletics is huge.
Yeah, I'm not saying brand it wrong, I just.
Yeah, no, and I agree with what you said. I mean, ideally, yes, I, that would work best, but.
Just the redundancies is kind of where we are, why we are where we are, if that makes sense. And kind of keep that part of the conversation as we move forward and figure out what the answer is. But I don't know, I don't think anybody has the answer, otherwise it'd be written on paper and we'd be moving in that direction.
What would be the next step? I mean, is where it's.
That's what I was just gonna ask. Would be the next thing that we would do.
Um, well, the next step is if, if you are interested in a site, uh, I think our next step is to approach the cities and say, you know, this is what we're looking at and, you know, are, are they open to that? Again, I've just talked to the two administrators, so this is their opinion that, that the council would be interested in it. So I think we need to bring that in front of them, um, get them on board right away. Because the last thing you want is rumors flying around and nobody talking to them. So that would be my suggestion for your next step on a new site. Um, if we want to go back and revisit, you know, a remodel of this existing site, um, I will throw on the table that we've done, you know, just a ton of remodeled work and we, we really can do a lot with an existing facility and it can happen. It's, it's the building there, the structures there and a lot can happen with it, but, uh, you know, it doesn't come easy. So, um, I think you've got definitely a viable campus here that we could do something with, a brand new school and, but.
But here, here's kind of the problem, we're struggling with this. I mean, from what we've seen so far, in order for us to get to the square footage, the magic number that we want to get to.
Yeah.
I mean, you're talking to me and your home and all, that's almost as close as it would have been built.
Correct.
That, that was up and above the three million dollar, fit him in there. There was a whole nother scenario to get to our, basically.
And after that, like Kelly said, we still don't have football, we just don't have the side.
You're right on.
And that one time, Katie, you talked about right sizing the buildings, demolishing parts of it, you know, decreasing the square footage and remodeling and upgrading.
Yep.
Or was that ever, was that ever, where did that go?
Well, that would be included, you know, if you decided, you're on two campuses, you know, we're trying to go backwards. So you're on two campuses, we talked about right sizing. I mean, we definitely know we have more square footage, so whether it happens here or it happens in Gilbert or it happens on a new site, you know, we know your own, that was two hundred and twenty thousand square feet. I mean, that's where you need to be. So, um, so whether that happens here or there or brand new, I think you, you need, you need to make that work because that's how you're going to save your money is by bringing your facilities down to the square footage that you need. Absolutely. So if you move all the kids.
The renovation. He was asking is where, where did that go? And I think the answer is the, the price they got it was more than previous market subjects.
So the renovation of both campuses and right sizing was.
Pretty expensive.
There was different funding mechanisms involved in all of it too. You know, you've got to remember that. If you just, you do it on your own or otherwise you get equalization, otherwise you get collaboration dollars. I mean, there was, there was different, different, um, options for each conversation, I guess, for lack of a better way to say it. I don't remember exactly what all the numbers were, but one number was fifty, sixty million dollars for right sizing and it was six million dollars for a new school with different financing options and.
Yeah, so we have a.
Cheaper to the tax, I mean, it was to the tax base. I mean, that is basically the conversation was.
So where we had started is we had the dual campus concept that we would keep pre-K six at Gilbert, move seven twelve to Evolith, you know, we would right-size the buildings. At that time, that was a forty-seven million dollar ticket.
And we never quite got right-sized.
Correct, yeah, you were still oversized because you were still duplicating services. So, um, your most inefficient option is a dual campus option. I mean, that's pretty understandable. Um, then option two was the consolidated pre-k, pre-K twelve on an existing campus. Um, so that was a fifty-three million dollar line item that we looked at. And then a, um, new pre-K twelve on a new site was a sixty-five million dollar line item, which was inclusive of an auditorium and a pool at that time.
That was, was not including a land though.
But that did not include, um, it did not include any purchase or utilities and it did not include field work.
How much was that one?
Sixty-five million.
Just for the building?
Correct.
And keep in mind, I mean, the reason why we started this conversation with our operating costs and for each one of those plans having different reduction in our operating costs, but we didn't get there until I think it was a new building because that was the most efficient, right?
Yes.
So it's still short on the remodels and right sizing because we still had basements and excess space. I think even the Evolith campus final one, even right-sized, was still a hundred and fifty thousand square feet too much.
Yeah, because you still have a lower level that you're not using. Correct, yep. Mm-hmm. So your option for your new pre-K twelve school in an existing Evolith site, oh, that was on the existing Evolith site. If you took down Evolith and just started over, I mean, that would, you know, you've got that option too. That was, um, a savings of about one point three million dollars a year, which would be the same thing as a new school on a new site and we're looking at about one point three million a year.
Yeah, but the rest of that conversation comes up, yeah, what a facility on the site and.
Correct, yep. And I, I mean, I've got this information too, if you guys.
Still on the website, isn't it, Jack?
Yeah. So, yeah, so the kind of parts, I feel like hasn't changed a lot for you guys. I mean, I think those numbers are still more valid. Um, you know, we could certainly revisit some of those, but overall, kind of big picture, I am still comfortable with where those numbers are sitting. So, um, so I guess the question is back to, you know, what is the next step? I think if a new school on a new site is really a viable conversation, I think you guys need to get in front of the city to figure out.
Well, I think at this point, we decided that we were going to look at the feasibility of it. I don't know that, whether that's the answer or not. I think they need to know if that's even a possibility. And start on site selection because if there wasn't a site.
That is not, it's off the table. Yeah, and that was the piece too, is the, I mean, to give a little bit more information to the community too. I mean, just as we explored this stuff then, so what would this look like? And to be able to start getting some actual.
Actual costs.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, because we could do, I mean, again, with site development, your two sites are going to be different when it comes to development. You know, I must have mean that this is going to be a little more expensive site to build on. This would probably be a little bit easier from using the word probably because you never know until you get in there, but. And we could certainly get an athletic field cost to build those athletic conferences and.
Now, a calculation for the savings, Katie, is that guaranteed?
Um, no, I would not guarantee it, nothing is guaranteed.
Because you're all working from seven hundred and fifty-one thousand all the way up to one million, three hundred and eight thousand.
Yep, yep. So I don't have the figures in front of me, but what we went through was operating costs. We went through all new utilities, um, we went through staffing and we went through about twelve different categories. So at that snapshot in time, um, we felt very comfortable with that number. I actually think it's a pretty conservative number, um, but I can't guarantee, yeah.
Guaranteed.
No, awesome.
But I.
No, I'm by question.
Yeah.
Now, on this, on this, Katie, these numbers for the new school, either whatever site, is that taken consideration demolition of both campuses at all or?
That is not, um, we have not talked about the cost of demolition for either one, so.
Do you know what that roughly that would be?
Hmm, I could get a number for you to give you a good sense of that.
I mean, because you've got to take that into consideration too.
Yep, absolutely, you're right. I mean, that's a whole lot of thing is that you do have two campuses then that are, or, or sell them or if somebody wants them.
That's a repurposing conversation.
I mean, I think there is, I mean.
I think it's good to have that demo number in your back pocket because that's your worst case scenario, right? So you would at least know if, if that's what it came to and if you could sell them or somebody wants them, then it's kind of a bonus too, so.
I mean, I just know we have community entities that are outgrowing some of their space in our classes area that maybe they would be interested in the Gilbert campus. It's a smaller campus versus the, you know, and then, so.
All right, so back to, how do we, do we do the next?
Well, do you want us to move forward on, are we thinking this is viable options? Are there other areas that we want to explore?
We don't know if it's viable, I know that's, that's what you're, you're here for.
Okay, all right.
Do we, is it, I mean, is it, is it logical right now to go to the cities, bullshit cities and ask for some kind of support, interest for these sites? And then if there is, maybe we can start exploring if how feasible they are to build on or construct.
I, I think we need to get in front of it for two reasons. One, then we can really see if they're interested, you know, so they know that we're off the table. And two, I think you need to get involved, you know, square one. So again, best sheet of paper doesn't fall around and Gilbert gets it and be like, oh my gosh, school district building in the school. So I think that's, that's our next step to get in front of them and pitch our, pitch our concept.
It's our concept.
Our concept is that we could do a new school in fields on these two sites. I think that's where you need to start.
And if there's other sites that come up along the way and we go look at that in the mix, are we just going to kind of focus on these two strong candidates or how to move forward or are we?
Really, is that it? I mean, that's it, this is it. There are some different options, like you said, in progress park, we could get a little closer to the college.
And it's still city hall?
Yes.
Well, most of what I'm thinking is probably dealing with the city is probably more ideal than anything else as far as.
At this stage of it, right.
You know.
Because that's going to be probably the most cost-effective scenario versus a private candidate.
Well, anything private is way out to be better.
Yep.
Oh, as far as location?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we did try to keep ourselves in, you know, a radius, but we need to be on a highway.
To be on a highway, I mean, honestly, both, both of these locations are logistically on a, on a thorough way, you know, like a highway or a fountain, so I mean, that's nice.
It makes utility connections a little cheaper.
Yeah.
You're not going to leave a water tower. Like trail runs right by here.
It does, which is convenient.
It does, and that's what I'm thinking as far as kids might go to school.
And this site also has, which I thought was interesting, is the, is there community fields or that campground that's there? So, you know, maybe you can share it, this goes back to sharing, you know, can you share a baseball fields with the city or soccer? You know, could you create a spot there that makes some sense to tie into those campgrounds? Or, you know, what else do they need down there that you guys could share together? So that would be my suggestion for the next step is to get in front of the cities with a concept that it's an area that's big enough to build, you know, have to do some sort of a structure and fields on there. We would need access to it, utilities.
So some of the additional pieces that you mentioned that we don't have within that sixty-five million would be the site itself and to be able to get it up to building.
Correct.
And the athletic piece.
Yeah, and I mean, again, this was last year, so we hadn't even talked about potential site locations. If we can kind of whittle ourselves, we can give a better idea. Like utilities, that was one, well, I don't know where we're putting it. So now if I know we're coming up with thirty-seven, I can give you an idea of what it would be to develop both of these sites. You know, a little bit more of a real cost.
Would it be too premature to be able to ask for the athletic cost then too?
No, yep.
If we were to, I mean, so doing it duly where.
And that's just square footage, generic numbers, she can give us on the.
Yep, absolutely.
And don't forget tennis courts too.
Yes.
Good.
Yes, yeah, we could do that and parking even, yeah, there's lots of pieces.
Okay.
Uh, the puzzle that are still out there. Does that work? Okay, all right, we'll do that. And then, yeah, as far as remodeling, if there's costs or specific areas, you know, we can do a, a quick square footage study in that too, so. How's that, I think, great?
Thank you.
Absolutely.
He taking his bags?
I want to know, does that policy for the biking to school?
We don't have, we don't have to try and provide something to the school.
Personal decision.
Well, it's not been policy necessarily.
What is that, more to lock up the bikes?
Oh.
I had there was that debate that the most fight driving.
I was thinking, it would be a really nice bonus if a bike trail goes right by a school as far as access to per K L in Gilbert and. And just exercise for children.
My kids got a bad bike.
Oh.
I don't know.
Blake, I can see Blake riding with that bike.
Good question.
I mean, so there's like any policy that they can't or whatever?
No, I think it's just something that you have below.
Really?
Another one that happened.
So you're not allowed to ride your bike to school?
That's what I hear.
That's what I got told.
My rebellious daughter tested, be like, Ali.
I mean, I just think.
It was that way when I got here, they didn't allow it. And nobody's asked me that.
I do wonder if it's because if we don't have a location to be able to lock them up or something. I don't remember ever, no, I guess I never liked school. I would block the way.
All right, Mr. Chair, so we have, uh, the number is awesome, you know, Jim. The first, uh, the first couple in there, which is probably all we get through tonight. The first, uh, the first couple in there, which is probably all we get through tonight. Was a recommendation from the MSBA trainer that you had that day. Recommendations, you said that we should be going through two oh six, two oh nine week, and we have two million adopted. I put it in here in case you want to. Two oh six, I just passed around, because there's two versions of it. There's one that our board passed last year, and there's the MSBA model that is slightly different. So, I don't know, uh, do you want to have someone read through these and comment as we go, or?
Who is our version of the two oh six?
This one that says that we're doing two million adopted, I just passed it around.
Oh, was it two oh nine?
I only have one, yeah. He started passing out brandy.
I looked, and they all said two oh six, so I thought it's the same thing.
I would have, I would have done the same there.
One that says Edward on the top, and one on the bottom.
Jeff, do you need to add that?
I need to remember Gilbert.
That's right, I'll get it later.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, have some read through them?
Yes, I think.
Comment, by the way. You don't mind reading?
I don't.
Well, let's start with the lowest number then. Two oh six.
Are we reading what we have, or the MSBA? Read that with Gilbert, two oh six? Okay, Edward Gilbert Public Schools, two oh six, public participation in school board meetings, complaints about persons at school board meetings, and data privacy considerations. Purpose, A, the school board recognizes the value of comments by the public in deliberations and decisions on school district matters. At the same time, the school board recognizes the importance of conducting orderly and efficient proceedings with opportunity for expression of all participants' respective views. B, the purpose of this policy is to provide procedures to assure open and orderly public discussion as well as to protect the due process and privacy rights of individuals under the law. Two, general statement of policy, A, the policy of the school board is to encourage comments by citizens of subjects related to the management of the school district at school board meetings. The school board may adopt a reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on public expression in order to facilitate comments by all interested parties. B, the school board shall, as a matter of policy, protect the legal rights of privacy and due process of employees and students. Three definitions, A, personnel data means government data on individuals maintained because the individual is or was an employee or applicant for employment. For purposes of this policy, employee includes a volunteer or an independent contractor. B, personnel data on current and former employees that is public includes name, employee identification number, which must not be the employee's social security number, actual gross salary, salary range, terms and conditions of employment relationship, contract fees, actual gross pension, the value and nature of employer paid fringe benefits, the basis for an amount of any added remuneration, including expense reimbursement in addition to salary, bargaining unit, job title, job description, education and training background, previous work experience, date of first and last employment, the existence and status of any complaints or charges against the employee, regardless of whether the complaint or charge resulted in disciplinary, disciplinary action. The final disposition of any disciplinary action as defined in Minnesota statute thirteen point forty-three subdivision two B, together with the specific reasons for the action and data documenting the basis of action, excluding data that would identify confidential sources who are employees of the public body. The complete terms of any agreement settling any dispute arising out of the employment relationship, including a buyout agreement as defined in Minnesota statute one twenty-three B, point one four-three subdivision two, except that the agreement must include specific reasons for the agreement if it involves the payment of more than ten thousand dollars of public money. Work location, work telephone number, badge number, work-related continuing education, honors and awards received, and payroll timesheets or other comparable data that are only used to account for employees' work time for payroll purposes, except to the extent that release of timesheet data would reveal the employee's reasons for the use of sick or other medical leave or other not public data. C, personnel data on current and former applicants for employment that is public includes veteran status, relevant test scores, rank on eligible list, job history, education and training, and work availability. Names of applicants shall be private data except when certified as eligible for appointment to a vacancy or when applicants are considered by the appointing authority to be finalist for a position in public employment. For purposes of this subdivision, finalist means an individual who is selected to be interviewed by the appointing authority prior to selection. D, educational data means data maintained by the school district which relates to a student. E, student means an individual currently or formerly enrolled or registered in the school district or applicants for enrollment or individuals who receive shared time services. F, data about applicants for appointments to a public body, including a school board, collected by the school district as a result of the applicant's application for appointment to the public body or private data on individuals, except that the following are public. Name, city of residence, except where the appointment has a residency requirement that requires the entire address to be public. Education and training, employment history, volunteer work, awards and honors, prior government service, any data required to be provided or that is voluntarily provided in an application to a multi-member agency pursuant to Minnesota statute fifteen point zero five nine seven, and veteran status. Once an individual has been appointed to a public body, the following additional items of data are public. Residential address, either a telephone number or electronic, electronic mail address where the appointee can be reached or both at the request of the appointee. The first and last dates of service on the public body, the existence and status of any complaints or charges against an appointee, and upon completion of an investigation of a complaint or charge against an appoint, appointee, the final investigative report unless access to the data would jeopardize an active investigation. Any electronic mail address or telephone number provided by a public body for use by an appointee shall be public. An appointee may use an electronic mail address or telephone number provided by the public body as a designated electronical mail address or telephone number at which the appointee can be reached. Rights to privacy, A, school district employees have a right to privacy related to matters which may come before the school board, including but not limited to the following. One, right to a private hearing for teachers pursuant to Minnesota statute one twenty-two eight point four zero subdivision fourteen, teacher's discharge hearing. Two, right to privacy of personnel data as provided by Minnesota statute thirteen point four three, personnel data. Three, right to consideration by the school board of certain data treated as not public as provided in Minnesota statute thirteen D, point zero five, not public data. Four, right to a private hearing for licensed or non-licensed head varsity coaches to discuss reasons for non-renewal of a coaching contract pursuant to Minnesota statute one twenty-two eight point three three subdivision three. B, school district students have a right to privacy related to matters which may come before the school board, including but not limited to the following. One, right to a private hearing, Minnesota statute one twenty-one eight point four seven subdivision five, student dismissal hearing. Two, right to privacy of educational data, Minnesota statute thirteen point three two, educational data, twenty USC, one, two, three, two G, F R B. Three, right to privacy of complaints as provided by child abuse reporting and discrimination laws, Minnesota statute six twenty-six point five five six, reporting of maltreatment of minors, and Minnesota statute three sixty-three A, Minnesota right, Minnesota Human Rights Act. The public's opportunity to be heard. The school board will strive to give all citizens of the school district an opportunity to be heard and to have complaints considered and evaluated within the limits of the law and this policy and subject, and this policy and subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. Among the rights available to the public is the right to access public data as provided by Minnesota statute fifteen point four three subdivision two, public data. Procedures, A, agenda items. One, citizens who wish to have a subject discussed at a public school board meeting are required to notify the superintendent's office no less than five business days in advance of the school board meeting. The citizen should provide his or her name, address, and the name of the group represented, if any, and the subject to be covered or the issue to be addressed. Two, citizens wish, who wish to address the board, school board on an agenda may speak during the discussion of that item which was previously requested under A one or may address agenda items under visitor input, see open forum criteria, if the board chair means inappropriate. Three, the school board chair will recognize one speaker at a time and will rule out of order other speakers who are not recognized. Only those speakers recognized by the chair will be allowed to speak. Comments by others are out of order. Individuals who interfere with or interrupt speakers, the school board, or the proceedings may be directed to leave. Four, the school board retains the discretion to limit comments on any agenda item to a reasonable period of time as determined by the school board. If a group or organization wishes to address the school board on a topic, the school board reserves the right to require designation of one or more representatives or spokespersons to speak on behalf of the group or organization. Five, matters proposed for placement on the agenda which may involve data privacy concerns, which may involve preliminary allegations or which may be potentially libelous or slanderous in nature shall be considered in public, but shall be processed as determined by the school board in accordance with the governing law.
Says slanderous in nature shall not be considered public.
Six, the school board chair shall promptly rule out of order any comments by any person, including school board members, that would violate the provisions of state or federal law, this policy, or the statutory rights of privacy of an individual. Seven, personal attacks by anyone addressing the school board are unacceptable. Persistence in such remarks by an individual shall terminate that person's privilege to address the school board. Eight, depending upon the number of persons in attendance seeking to be heard, the school board reserves the right to impose such other limitations and restrictions as necessary in order to provide an orderly, efficient, and fair opportunity for those present to be heard. B, complaints. One, routine complaints about a teacher or other employee should first be directed to that teacher or employee or the employee's immediate supervisor. Two, if the complaint is against an employee relating to child abuse, discrimination, racial, religious, or sexual harassment, or other activities involving an intimidating atmosphere, the complaint should be directed to the employee supervisor or other official as designated in the school district policy governing that kind of complaint. In the absence of a designated person, the matter should be referred to the superintendent. Three, unresolved complaints from paragraph one of this section or problems concerning the school district should be directed to the superintendent's office. Four, complaints which are unresolved at the superintendent's level may be brought before the school board by notifying the school board in writing. See, open forum. The school board shall normally provide a specified period of time called visitor input when citizens may address the school board on any topic, subject to the limitations of this policy. Any citizen who wishes to address the board under visitor input is required to notify the superintendent's office at least five hours in advance of the school board meeting. The school board reserves the right to allocate a specific period of time for this purpose and limit time for speakers accordingly. The school board may decide to hold certain types of public hearings, public meetings where the public will not be invited to address the school board. Possible examples are work sessions and board retreats. The public will still be entitled to notice of those, of these meetings and will be allowed to attend these meetings, but the public will not be allotted time during the meeting to address the board. D, no board actions at same meeting. Except as determined by the school board to be necessary or in an emergency, the school board will not take action at the same meeting on an item raised for the first time by the public. Penalties for violation of data privacy. A, the school district is viable for damages, costs, and attorney's fees, and in the event of a willful violation, punitive damages for violation of state data privacy laws in the SO statute thirteen point zero eight subdivision one. B, a person who willfully violates data privacy or whose conduct constitutes the knowing unauthorized acquisition of not public data is guilty of a misdemeanor, Minnesota statute thirteen point zero nine. C, in the case of an employee willful violation of the Minnesota data privacy law, practices law, chapter thirteen, and any rules adopted thereunder, including any action subject to a criminal penalty, constitutes just cause for suspension without pay or dismissal, Minnesota statute thirteen point zero nine. I don't need to read all that, right? Please, they're cheating.
Thank you.
I'll answer questions.
Yeah, Jeff, I see with the MSB, MSBA, I was kind of reading along, there's big changes in how ours is.
Is there big changes? I noticed four.
Well, it's just, it's kind of, not big change, it kind of basically limits the, what I would say about the public input and, not public input, but it's just kind of, it's just words a little bit different.
Two, four, six, and, um, open forum.
Number two in the open forum are.
Yeah, number, number four. Number four, procedures, one, two, four, six, and see open forum are all. I mean, it's just a little bit different than what the MSBA, you know, it's like five days or whatever. Kind of read through it earlier today, I guess I didn't, I think it was adopted five twenty-three of two sixteen, they approved the changes.
I see. So, I, I see that the discussion, you know, they switched out for some discussion, they put comments in there. I mean, so that's, you know, some semantics that was kind of threw out. And then in the one, two, and the open forum, it's specifying the limit, it's limiting it more than the MSBA where the MSBA doesn't necessarily have a time frame for that agenda items for visitor input, and our policy is putting on that timeframe.
item for visitor input, and our policy is putting on that timeframe. Did we, did we ever just have the MSBA? Does anyone know? We ever had the policy without these timeframes on there?
I believe.
You did?
Yes, I believe.
Do you know how it went? I'm assuming there was a reason that we made some changes versus just adopting the MSBA? I'm just wondering why.
I mean, they're less than a year old, these changes.
Well, but they could have changed a word and, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, all the changes would have had to be listed.
On the back?
Yep. So everything was done at one time, obviously.
Those aren't listing the changes on the back.
No, all was approved, well, the changes were all approved.
But that doesn't mean that, so you can have a policy and then change one word next year, and then you update it at the time that it was adopted for that policy, even though you kept everything, I mean, you can keep.
Usually you keep track of every change.
Not necessar, no, not necessarily, yeah. So I mean, that's what I'm just wondering, how long and why the change, if we know.
The five days was specified.
About that?
Or, you know, why the five days was specified?
For five hours or?
Yeah.
Was it just on the history?
We were in a place where we had people talking during visitor input about that, they were very, personal issues. And we tried to avoid, by, by knowing what they're going to talk to, talk about, we can, we could, we're trying to avoid something.
I think to put it in context, the five day thing is to, for a public person requesting an item beyond the agenda, and that gives us time to notice the public of that in the, I don't know.
Yeah, the five hour thing, the five hour thing.
Before, before the visitor input. To give, or notice of there's going to be input, and what the, what the, what the subject matter is going to be. And that's what, like, if you, if you recall during our board member training that Katie talked about, is that, um, our policy is to ask what they're going to talk about, and if it ends up being a personnel matter that the board and the superintendent approach that person before the meeting, we try to resolve that so it's not, you know, we don't allow personnel information to be spewed out. That's why we wanted that five hour window towards it because people would notice when they'd lock in the door and they would refuse to tell us, even though we said, we asked, you know, they would refuse to tell us what they were here to talk about, and then they would attack employees in our school district and violate personnel data, and even those people that were told that they were in violation of personnel that didn't care.
But that's the piece, do we rule them out of order then, just as the MSBA training did on, I mean, I think we do have procedures that we need to kind of implement and follow where if they are speaking out of turn with what they should be saying, immediately the chair would rule them out of order. If they continue, we immediately stop our meeting at that point, and.
Hopefully we weren't doing that, so.
Okay.
But even by rights, if we thought were to follow our meetings, there would be many of people that would have their public meeting rights taken away by our policy.
Well, but it's policy, so I want us to follow, and I do think that if we end up encountering those kinds of situations where people are attacking in any way, we have it in policy and we do have to put it as our board because it's not productive either.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, I think, I'm, I'm baked into policy and us seeing what we have written down, so.
Should we tell them?
So, okay, so this, this is my blunt statement. So if we were practicing policy, we would not necessarily need to have those five days and five hours in there. If we were practicing it as is, where if someone walked in and gave visitor input in an open forum and they started talking about things that were off the limits as far as private data or anything, and we follow policy, we would immediately address that at that very given time. So I'm just questioning if it needs to be in there if we follow the rest of the policy as it's written, like maybe we weren't necessarily before, wouldn't that's why it was put in there, but. To a brandy thing here.
We still need to notice for the agenda.
I, I get it.
Yeah, not a big thing, that's, that might be as about packets, so we can have kind of research, but, I mean, and this board has already been a part of some public ruling old person, nobody spoke up, so it's, it's one thing to say that we have.
To have the ideal.
Right, and then to actually, I mean, just because a chair doesn't act doesn't mean that the rest of the board member sitting here can't speak either, I mean, and if we were to get up and leave the room in certain situations, I mean, the whole board has to follow the policy, and that's the point of.
I don't know if I necessarily agree with that because there's been times where I have done that, so, I don't know if I'd agree with that. But I do think that having some sort of notification before the school board meeting, I think that that would be beneficial so there's no surprises. So having some timeframe before an actual board meeting, you know, like the five hours or whatever, I think that that is, that's not asking too much because then there, like I said, there's no surprises, we have an idea what the person's coming about, you know.
That is the thing to do, a lot of things are happening in the previous district, I was in, is they actually had the chair without sign up, read sign up, and.
That day?
That day?
Yeah, that's not talking about, right in front of me. That's not talking about adding something to the agenda.
Well, an agenda, agenda I do, so I'm changing my, continuing now.
Let's find this discussion, right?
So, the agenda I do get as far as if I'm a community member and I'm putting something onto the agenda that I want to bring up at the school board meeting, that is going to give the rest of our community an opportunity to see what's on that agenda, you know, I mean, because I am adding to it. So I do get for that notification and everything. I like the sign up versus the five hours. I mean, I'm just reading, you know, as, I was following along to and marking kind of where our differences were lying when, when Brandy did the reading and.
I mean, just, just for the comments versus discussion, that's just because, that came up because everything the MSBA has ever taught any of us is that public input is input, it's not a dialogue, and that's where, you know, when, when we had those strange meetings, I guess you'd say, um, it, it was basically to remind the board that it's, it's not an agenda item where it's open discussion.
Well, this is the point.
It's, it's, they're, they're making comments to the board, taking into consideration, it's not our policy or strategy to engage in a dialogue like it's an, an agenda item, if that makes sense.
That makes complete sense because she did bring that up in that MSBA training. That's interesting, and I, so, good job on catching this and that.
Well, my, the other con is, you know, that I had been thinking, well, there's a lot of community members aren't, you know, they don't read these policies and if they come for public input, they, they don't necessarily always know the rules. So one of the things that was, um, I had read for a suggestion is having something, you know, a pamphlet or, you know, brochure at the table that says.
Sign up at the doors.
That says, you know, there isn't going to be interaction, you can provide your input, you know, and, and speak to us, but we're not going to speak back, you know, it's not going to be interactive, something like that, rather than, because I wouldn't have known these things had I not ran for school board, I mean, just coming in as a citizen.
And I do think that's perfect, even like the work session in our whole athletic meeting that happened, I mean, I, I'm making an assumption, but I make an assumption that a lot of people that came thought that they would be able to contribute and have discussion, and we're unaware that it's at a work session, we don't have public input, that's not a place to have public input, it's at our meetings that we have. I mean, so it would be nice to just have it somehow clearly noted for people coming in.
And I know, I know at one time you guys made a statement before meetings saying that, right?
Yeah.
I thought a statement was made. Maybe it wasn't an ongoing thing, maybe it was just.
Oh, that what, that's what led up to the changes or any of the, you know, the statements, how we conduct meetings because it's so bad.
Like I said, I don't think people necessarily know all the rules of.
You know, as you move forward with discussions on where we're going to go with the campuses, you're going to get a lot of people in here, you know, and you've got to give them time to talk, but even though, you know, it's got to be clearly, you know, told to them how it's going to work.
Well, and especially, like, if we have, you know, like, let's say we end up doing that list idea, or not, I mean, even if we do the five hours and keep the five hours, if we have a list of twenty people, that way it's clear because we do have the ability to limit the time, so based on how many people are signed up, so if we have twenty people, we may be limiting it to, you know.
I don't get that, but it could happen, that would be good, that would be good because.
It could very well happen, so.
But that is good, if you get twenty people talking about something, that means the community's getting engaged, and that's what you want.
But I mean, we may have to limit that time to two minutes versus the standard four or five minutes, you know, and that way then, you know, that would be part of that explanation there. Because I do, I agree, I think the more that we do go into the buildings and everything else, it's going to, those are hot items, those are hot items that our community is going to get more involved with, and I, I really do think that we will see more people at our table or speaking with them.
You know, and trying to, you know, trying to shut them down probably wouldn't, you know, I mean, not shut them down, but.
Right, I, you know.
You know, I mean, it just wouldn't look good, you know, because even though they don't know the policy, you know.
Being devil's advocate for the, that, though, you know, there, these are, these are meetings, whether committee meetings or school board meeting, whatever, and there's, there was discussion about having informational sessions, and I would, I would think maybe at that time, we could have more of an interactive discussion or question-answer type thing down the road, but if we let that happen at every single meeting we're at, we're going to, we're going to be here until ten o'clock at night.
So be it.
Well, but, well, you know me, I mean, I, I want public's input as well, I mean, I think it's important, but we also have to conduct all of our other meet, you know, other things as well, so if we have informational sessions or, you know, monthly coffee talk or something, I don't know.
I mean, when people sign up, you give them something to say, like, here, you know, this is the rules, if you're going to sign up and talk, here's, you know, what you got to buy.
You're looking for, you're, and you're looking for like a little pamphlet.
Like, like, like Brandy said, you know, just a piece of.
Yeah, it's, yeah, enough to explain the quick, quick and dirty of it, I don't know. Yeah. And that would be helpful.
Then as far as the, uh, the five hour thing, you know, keep that, you know, change that.
You know, people walk, if people, if people walk in, they want to talk, I mean, and they don't have this information, you know, they wouldn't be allowed to talk, right?
Right.
Is that how I, is that how I get that? So, you know, visitor input or whatever, or public input, or whatever you want to call it, I guess, you know, if anybody wanted to talk, I mean, well, see, that goes back to, I mean, you could have a sign up right here.
But the other thing too, if you're, if, if we, for instance, somebody walked in, we had our meeting, and something got them fired up, it gives people cool down time, you know, so if they have to wait until the next meeting to discuss something, it's not a bad idea.
Yeah, keep in mind, the other side of this conversation is, I mean, is I was very ignorant coming as a school board, I mean, I, I, I didn't know what I didn't know, if that makes sense.
That makes perfect sense.
And as you, you know, sitting here for almost, what, three years now, I mean, two years, three years, um, there'd be many times when people come in and they don't even, they don't even know the facts, they just, you know, they're just speaking, and, and that was kind of the point that Katie made, is it's, you want public input, but, I mean, being that it's not a dialogue to inform people, I mean, it's, you don't want a circus either, so that's the fine line of, how do you, how do you, um, you know, like the personnel stuff, people come in, they're mad at the superintendent or a teacher or somebody and, you know, it's, it's the hard, people sitting here yelling about things that aren't even relevant, I guess, for lack of words, we're just holding up business of the school and kids.
That's not a order, it's got to be called right then and there, as, as the board chair, you got to be able to recognize that and end it right there.
And it does show on here, this, you know, because I agree with Brandy, um, yes, I did sign up for this, but to be here for a five hour meeting every.
Every Monday.
Other week, on top of our work sessions, you know, I have work and my family. But it also, it does also identify that we are able to, the school board's able to limit the time of the open forum, so we can say, we, okay, we have thirty minutes, there's twenty people in here, we have thirty minutes, so whether you want to elect a few people that, you know, I, you know, I came with my neighbor and my girlfriend, and we have the same opinion, so we're going to elect one of us to speak up on behalf of the three of us, and they can recognize that, I mean, so I do think that, you know, and they mentioned that in here as far as a group.
Should we stay the same, we can sign up with, and then, doesn't matter.
I'm good with staying the same right now and doing the visitor piece, um, the information thing.
Post it too, that must sign up five hours before or whatever, so that way they can see that as they're coming into the meeting.
More important, getting used to it.
It gets, yeah, put in the heads of everybody, that's, that's the rule. That way they can say, well, that's on the door.
And they might not, so they may come that day being ready, thinking I'm going to be able to give input.
And have that way it won't get us fired up, they'll see it.
Well, and it's okay that, shoot, I didn't realize that, I have to wait until two weeks. I mean, honestly, that's the reality of anything that we go to sometimes where it's not what we necessarily expected.
Yeah, but if somebody, you know, somebody comes in and wants to speak under visitor input, he would, he would not be allowed to speak because he didn't sign up. Say he, uh.
That was correct.
Per policy, yes, if we keep the policy as it is.
I, I.
I'm just forced to, I don't care what happens.
I mean, I, I just, I like the sign up sheet, you know, a guy come, wants to come in and talk about the trucks, you know, he wants to talk to the school board about noisy vehicles or something, he's headed up, he comes in there that day, he just wants to talk about it. I mean, I feel if you just sign up, you know, as long as we kind of know what, well, I mean, you don't want to, I mean, five hours, a guy's going to come in, he's got to come here, sign up, and he's got to come back, you know, to the meeting, I mean, he could just come here, sign up and talk. See, it could be something good, could be something negative, we don't know.
Yeah, sign up, it'll be a phone call, email, whatever it is.
Well, I was thinking too, what, what if you're working that day, and you want to get on that, like, you're on a day shift, you want to get on, you know, visitor input.
If it's something.
Five hours, you know, and you're in work, how, how are you going to put that in?
Well, you've got, you've got potentially two weeks, I mean, you know.
What do other districts do, do, do other districts offer public input without any sign up, or how do they do it?
The only other one that I'm real familiar with is, like I said, where it came from, the, the sign up with the chair before the meeting.
Any timeframe, any hours or anything like that beforehand?
Sign up before, once the meeting started, then the sign up was over.
Are there any significant cons to that? I mean, my, one thing that I keep thinking about is if we end up having a large group that want to give visitor input and giving our chair enough time to be able to make a decision on, you know, how much do we have on the agenda, are we going to have to limit, I mean, and to have it right up to the time that the meeting happens, there's not much time to be mindful and planning of how that visitor input's going to be addressed at that time. I mean, I'm, like, three people, it's not going to be an issue, you know, but I'm, I'm thinking, like, yeah, I mean, just all the possible.
Then you just limit it, then you limit, you put this sheet up there when it's full.
So do you do to four forty-five, you know, to four forty-five then, or fifteen minutes prior to the start of the meeting, or, I don't, I don't know.
No, you would have to.
I mean, that would be my concern. It would have to be one.
I think you'd have the visitor input during the regular meeting.
Well, that's what I'm saying, no, I'm saying sign up, they can sign up up to like fifteen minutes prior to the start of the meeting. That way, that would give the chair time to be able to review everything and decide how many people are signed up to see if that time needs to be limited or something for the agenda, if we have a lot of items or if there's a lot of visitors. I mean, that would be my one con that I would see as far as not giving time. I mean, that would be my one con that I would see as far as not giving time for the chair to.
I mean, I have two things. I mean, to Randy's point, I mean, you got two weeks to plan accordingly. And then, I mean, this policy has been enacted from the better part of the year now. I mean, even Mr. Begich served notice when he wants to stop talk, you know, I mean. So I, I don't, I don't know if it's doing anything bad or if it has done anything bad. If nothing else, I mean, we've, we've had more productive, regular meetings since then.
Technically, we don't have that a lot of public input at all, correct?
I don't wanna chase away people. I mean, I don't wanna chase, I don't wanna chase away people because one of the, one of the biggest things is, you know, will the community buy in? And I, I get what you're saying, Bill. I get what you're saying with wanting people to, you know, to come and feel the welcome, to, to have discussion or whatever. Not discussion because it's them.
But to be able to offer comments.
But to be able to offer comments. I, I understand that. But I also see a, a need for having an idea of what they wanna talk about. If it is a personnel issue, but then at the same time, Mark could do an out of order if it's a. So I guess I, I, I don't know. I guess it's whatever the majority thinks I'll go with either way.
The, the one piece too, though, also is if, if you do do a, a very short timeframe to allow for visitor input. If there is private information that should not be shared, or personnel information that shouldn't be shared at that. I would think that the person would not, would want to hear that and hear why, whether it's from the superintendent, whether it's from the chair prior to that meeting versus the meeting starting at fifteen minutes, you're trying to go through everything, get everything ready, and then trying to offer an explanation to two people that wanted to have their voice heard on complaints of a teacher and everything else. I mean, that would be the other piece is that it doesn't allow some of that conversation to happen and having that discussion beforehand. And then you might end up taking out people to that moment.
But the pamphlet would basically tell them what they can, what they cannot do.
Oh, it's not, I mean, it's, people, some people don't see that as personnel, I mean, they wouldn't necessarily, some people don't necessarily see it like that though. And then there would be that reason for that discussion.
Just gotta, just gotta try to make it more open.
The amount of time.
Mm-hmm.
Five hours seems a little too much time, you know, too obsessive. Like they should, an hour before. Then it gives some time for, for Mark to go through the list and determine how long.
I mean, are we gonna be rigid and they have to tell us what they're gonna talk about? I mean, there's many times we get people that talk that refuse, but we just allow them because.
What's his policy state?
Well, that's what I said, there's, there's, there's policy and there's what, what are we supposed to do, right?
Policy drives what we're supposed to do. So if.
So if we, if somebody refuses to tell us what they wanna talk about and the school district refuses to allow them to talk. And then we're the school district that refuses public input.
Yeah.
Exactly, and that's the way it has been.
We make the paper for everything else, called visitor input.
I mean, and that, that's fine. I mean, we can be a policy, you know.
So it's not, so it's not written into policy?
Well, there was something about something had. There's open forum, you know.
There was stating their address and, wasn't there, like, something?
Oh, I was, I was looking at open forum. Is it somewhere else? Oh, that's on the agenda item, that's an agenda item. But as far as open forum, I'm not seeing anything on there. And they said they wish us to address the board, as far as identifying what they want to address the board on.
Well, it says right there, it says the time when, so since we address the board on any topic, well, on any topic, subject to limitations of this policy. So what are the limitations of the policy?
All the personnel bound or all of that stuff.
We may have to know what they wanna talk about in prior, you know, the same as the catch twenty-two. If they start talking about Jeff Carey being a horrible superintendent, well, it's too late because that's our, you know.
Yeah, but the gavel goes down. Gavel goes down. I mean, how much negative comes out of public input? I mean, I guess I've heard some stuff, I guess. But I mean, it's, for the most part, I never really hear people talk.
It's been news for last year, it wasn't since.
Ever since the policy changed, right, I gotta do it better.
Yeah, but less people came to visitor input or know, do you know what it went down to or?
Could we throw an hour? Could we do, can we do at least an hour prior?
And then do you want to add the subject matter in there? It can be implied, but it's not clear. I don't like those policies, they're in a lot of people's. Huh?
This one is important.
Mm-hmm. Because I do think that planning part is important, especially. I'm very opt, I keep thinking twenty people are wanting to give visitor input. I'm very optimistic.
Me too.
Well, it could, and I wanna be prepared for like.
Like all the people show up for the meetings at six, right?
All the meetings, all the people that are coming at six, yes, yes.
I would like to.
I can tell you the night that the board had downed, called vacation, there were twenty-three of them, so.
Well, visitor input is required to notify the superintendent's office at least. Can we do one hour in advance of school board meeting and notify a subject matter?
What notification is subject matter?
I mean, if you put any limitation there, it's still limiting, limiting, you know.
It's not limiting the subject matter, it's limiting identifying.
The whole premise of talking about this, I'm assuming, is limiting public input. I mean, if you put any number in there, we're gonna view it as limiting input.
See, I don't necessarily think so.
Well, if, what if ten hours was in there with five hours be better?
But what's wrong with, oh, but I get that, but what's wrong with one hour versus five hours? What is those four hours gonna give us?
If you're gonna go that far, we shouldn't even put in time in a period.
But we do want time, because I, one of my, one of my concerns that I'm saying, we, I do feel strongly that we need time for our chair is to be able to gather and prepare for when we have large visitor input. So I do think it's essential that we have some timeframe in there. That's why I said as far as the sign up, right, leading up, I don't necessarily like, because it's not giving enough time to be able to prepare or have a conversation with someone on why. That wouldn't necessarily be able to be part of the visitor input, or they want two things and what you can talk about this, but this is really a personnel matter. You really can't discuss, and if you say that, then we have to really.
But we're kinda thinking about all comments, all visitor input being negative.